There's also nothing here that prohibits the drive-through. So this is not in a pedestrian-oriented overlay district. It's actually on a commercial corridor where we do allow for auto-oriented uses like this. Of course, this is a very visible corner and a very prominent site. We do have language that's been introduced by council that is going to look at how we regulate drive-throughs in the future and potentially extending the pedestrian-oriented overlay district. But for now, this is allowed. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell.
Brief question. So looking at the, we've got a few comments in our packet here, letters.
Yes, sorry, I should have touched on that.
Oh, that's all right.
Yes, East Isles did send in a letter that's in your supplemental packet recommending denial of the project.
And there are a few emails in the back here. And a number of the, I would say many of these address the concerns about the suburban feel of this building.
Yes.
Have there been discussions, whether in community, you know, maybe this is something for people who are here to testify can discuss, but discussions of what would make this less suburban feeling?
Staff has certainly had those discussions with the applicant. You know, our initial conversation with the applicant on a project like this is, can you put this in a multi-story building? Can you put it on the ground floor? Can you hide the drive-through any better? That's a conversation that we have with Walgreens frequently. And the only two-story building they've ever done is the one on West Broadway where that was a requirement. So they understand that, well, that's something that we would like to see and that we want more density and more intense development here. It's not required. And certainly, I believe their conversations with the neighborhood reflected that as well.
Commissioner Kronzer.
I have just two questions. Can you tell me why the entrance is not at the corner of 27th and Hennepin? And then second question is, can you just restate how this is defined as a two-story building?
Yes. So on the entrance piece, this is probably the best way to look at it. So we did look at whether or not to require the entrance to be moved to the corner. The primary reason why we didn't do that is because of the location of the bus shelter at the corner. So there is an existing bus shelter. I don't know, maybe I have a better picture of that. That would be right in front of where that entrance would be located. So it's something we considered, but because the entrance is already facing the street, which is the requirement in site plan review, they're technically meeting the requirement. We also looked at whether or not it would make sense to move the entrance into the center of the building where it would be centered on Hennepin, but not at the corner, so not interfering with the shelter. We did recommend that they look at that in the text of the report, but didn't require it as a condition of approval. Merely in this case, because this is a corner development, while that would make it more pedestrian-friendly, if this were mid-block, then that would get traffic moving up and down the street and get pedestrian traffic, you know, activating other businesses. In this case, it's at the corner, and as you turn the corner, it goes residential. So in this case, there didn't seem to be as much added benefit as there sometimes is in moving the entrance to the corner.
Then the rationale for it being two stories.
So per the zoning code definition of height, the first floor can be up to 20 feet, and anything above that is technically a second floor. So the overall height of this building is escaping me at the moment, but it's more than 20 feet.
I believe it's 26.
Thank you. So that six feet above the first 20 is technically a second story.
So there's no actual second floor to this building?
There's only a small mezzanine in the northwest corner of the building.
Which I don't believe counts as a second floor as part of the building code.
We would not give them credit for a second floor here, but we do count the mezzanine floor area.
Okay, are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And please state your name and address for the record.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Marcy Westlock. I'm with Alon Design Lab. I'm a civil engineer representing the property owner at Roat Osha. So as Kimberly discussed, we're proposing the single-story, single-use Walgreens. It's going to take down the Roat Osha as well as one other building. Along with that, we'll be reducing one of the curb cuts on Hennepin, maintaining, and it'll be moved further away from the intersection. We're maintaining both access points to alleviate traffic movements through the property. We did meet with the Neighborhood Association on February 16th, and we heard what they had to say, and they had several concerns. We have since been in discussions with Kimberly, have added some few things to the plan, and Kirby and the PDR comments, including restricting left-out access on the Hennepin, restricting access into the neighborhood, so no right turn on 27th. We're doing those with signage. In addition, at the Hennepin cut, we did add a pedestrian warning sign to alert drivers to that. The bike rack, we are going to accommodate that. We're going to move that into a parking stall closer to the entry and give back that space for the landscape. And then also the modified fence, we are taking that out as well to accommodate the neighbors' maintenance issue. And again, we did accommodate some clear-story windows on that west side face. I also just wanted to mention with, along, this is less than an acre property, but we are instilling stormwater management. We are removing TSS and some other requirements that the city usually asks for in parcels that are over an acre to improve some of the downstream impacts at the lakes as well. There was a question from Commissioner Rockwell on the suburban feel to the building. We have been in ongoing discussions with the Neighborhood Association as well as our architect to try to come up with some additional schemes, as well as the property owner. It's had many, many revisions, but we're still open to discuss that and see if there's a compromise that can be made, certainly. Any other questions?
All right. Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Vreeland.
Yes, I took some pictures today of Walgreens. It's very new Walgreens in the Highland neighborhood in St. Paul. And I'm curious as to whether St. Paul has a much better way of ensuring that buildings in an urban environment look like an urban environment. It's got crown molding, it's got dentals. It's two stories, although I think the second story is a faux second story. It's got windows, but I don't see anything behind the windows. But it's a very, it fits in an urban environment so well. It's got, you know, mostly brick with the gla-- I mean, it looks much better than the building that I'm seeing proposed. Are you familiar with the architect or--
Well, I'm familiar with the building itself. In fact, it's come across my desk, and we were in discussions with the architect and the property owner.
I'm sorry, can you repeat yourself? The door was--
Certainly. I have seen that building. In fact, I got several emails from it, pictures of it. We're in discussions with the architect currently to see if that can be accommodated with the property owner and what's being developed there. But yes, we are aware, and in fact, I believe that was part of the neighborhood discussion with the developer, that building specifically, and fitting in with the other brownstones in the neighborhood. So it's being looked at.
I mean, and when you look at the small area plan, the thing that is most requested in the small area plan is the eventual change of the look of that street to be more integrated, to be more urban, and less suburban. So again, it's certainly the neighborhood's desire to, as we change and develop new buildings, to head in a particular direction rather than go back to what we don't want. Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I had a similar question, which was, I mean, why are you building a building that the neighborhood doesn't want here? And what it's doing is it's forcing us now to change our regulations to become much more prescriptive of our architecture. So we can do that. You know, we can ban drive-throughs, we can require buildings to be two, three, four stories, but the more we start adding these restrictions and regulations, it becomes more prescriptive. And it would be nice if we could, you know, have, you know, major companies that have huge presence in our city be more responsive to what the neighborhood would like to see. And we know you can do great things. We see examples from Illinois of geothermal energy and wind power and Walgreens and all these things. And so I think we're all left wondering, why are we getting something so much worse here in Minneapolis? Obviously, we need to change our laws. But barring that, in the interim, you know, I guess I don't understand why we're getting such a suburban-style store in this very urban neighborhood. Don't you want to appeal to the people who've chosen to live in the city, who love where they live, who want it to be a walkable pedestrian place? Isn't that good for your business?
Like, I can't entirely speak for Walgreens, but I can speak for the property owner and the back-and-forth that they have gone through to cite this. There's been multiple discussions, and I've been involved with this over a year, just doing some conceptual planning and involved a lot of the Green Mill property, all of the Green Mill property at one point, but trying to promote a multi-use, multi-story building, both the Walgreens site and the Green Mill. And then there was many, many iterations of that. At the end of the day, it ended up not being viable with Walgreens and the property owner. As a member of the industry, however, I will say that we do care very deeply for how I used to live in that neighborhood, right across the street, kitty-corner. So I can say that we are still in discussions with the architecture itself and trying to make it more accommodating and aesthetically pleasing, for that matter.
All right. Are there any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can continue with the public hearing and move on to some other speakers. How many of you wish to speak on this item? A few of you. You can decide who goes first and come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, President Brown, members of the Plan Commission. My name's Andrew Eggerstrom. I'm the president of the East Isles Residents Association. Our address is 2751 Hennepin Avenue, Cell, Box 294. So since this project was first announced back in January, based off of emails I've gotten from neighborhood residents, discussions on Nextdoor, and other social media platforms, and discussions in person at meetings, this project has received nearly immediate and universal opposition from residents in the neighborhood. There are several reasons for the opposition. Some folks are upset that Roat Osha is closing. Others are upset about traffic issues as a result of cars coming out of the drive-through and turning onto 27th Street. A lot of people are upset about the contemporary or suburban look style of the building. And that front, there's only committed, share a lot of the same, those same concerns. In fact, a member, two of the representatives of our zoning committee, our chair and vice-chair, our chair is actually in attendance, they met twice with the developer, which resulted in some changes to the facade, so we do appreciate that. But most importantly, residents are upset about the striking lack of density of this project. The site sits along a high-frequency transit corridor. It's located in one of the busiest commercial corridors and highest-density neighborhoods of the city outside of downtown. Yeah, all we're getting is a single-story, single-use commercial building with a drive-through and service parking. If we look at the Uptown Small Area Plan, the future land use map identifies this location as mixed use with a height of two, between two and four stories. Since this proposal does not comply with the Uptown Small Area Plan, because it does not comply with the future land use, the East Isles Residents Association opposes this project. A lot of residents are frustrated that the Uptown Small Area Plan is not being enforced and want to know why. The answer is that, at the end of the day, the Uptown Small Area Plan is only a policy document and not a regulatory document. For regulatory enforcement, we have to look to the zoning code. This location is Zone C2. The proposed use, including the drive-through, is permitted in the C2 district. Also, there is no minimum FAR standard that would require greater density. So how do we update the zoning code to reinforce policies of the Uptown Small Area Plan and prevent low-density projects like this from happening in the future? We believe the answer is minimum FAR. Therefore, the East Isles Residents Association supports current efforts to expand pedestrian-oriented overlay along Hennepin Avenue, and we recommend that a minimum FAR requirement be added to the PO overlay. And then finally, just speaking for myself and not as, not as a representative of the Neighborhood Association, because this issue, we don't have an official position on, although we have many conversations about it. I want to touch on Commissioner Rockwell's comments about the entrance. I do feel that the entrance should be at the corner. If you look at this building, it's at a corner, and to have the entrance at the other side of the building, not only it's visually confusing, but it shows, in my opinion, that Walgreens' values, convenience for the customers to drive over, practicing good urban design. So like I said, those comments aren't my own personal view and not necessarily view of the Neighborhood Association. And so with that, once again, the East Isles Residents Association opposes this project and also supports ongoing efforts to expand the PO overlay and recommends that a minimum FAR be established in the PO overlay. Thank you, Mr. President, and Commissioners, for your time tonight.
Right, thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? If there are none, we can move on to the next speaker. And please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
I'm David Bryan from 2512 Euclid Place. I'm the head of the East Isles Zoning Committee. I'd just like to speak to what Mr. Vreeland brought up a minute ago about the appearance of the building. I mean, what's the most important thing is that we would like to see a multi-story, multi-use building here, which we may not get that. Seeing that we may not get it, talking about the appearance of the building we have, the representatives from Walgreens and the developer met with us, and we did talk about the appearance of this building. And we suggested to them that, like the Highland Park store, this building had more brick on it, specifically that the tower be fully brick and that the top of the tower wouldn't be such a modern cap, it would be more like a cornice cap, with a more traditional style. And so I'm just expressing my hope that if we don't get the multi-story building, that we could possibly get a more traditional-looking building here with more brick on it. That would help. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address.
My name is Peter Mason. I'm a resident of East Isles, also a board member on the Styles Association, and also recently on the Zoning Committee, at 2513 Irving Avenue. The main thing is going to, can remember, the council member Bender said a moment ago about discussions with the neighborhood and trying to make this better. Apparently, this has been going on for a year and a half, two years, that they've been planning this particular project, but it was only brought to the actual neighborhood intention less than two months ago. We've had discussions since it finally was brought to our attention, and they've been somewhat productive, somewhat not, but we would ask, I personally would ask for this to be continued, to allow those discussions, not them to have been rushed like they have been with our zoning committee. The drive-through by their very own traffic projections would have one to two cars a day in their drive-through. That's one thing we very much oppose. Additionally, the entrance behind a bus stop is actually a very logical entrance. One block away at the Uptown Diner, they have that exact same layout, and the entrance is at the corner, and the surrounding area is with the parking. These are discussions we are trying to continue to have outside of some of the more cosmetics things with the actual building. And so for that, beyond going into the Uptown Small Area Plan, the expansion of the pedestrian overlay district that has been proposed, the potential drive-through ban that may happen, I would ask that this be continued, to allow these discussions to continue between the Neighborhood Association and the developer, to allow that, just for maybe a couple of months, to that to continue. Because we're on a timeline that was not created by us, but created by the developer, by the applicant, and to allow those discussions to continue. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak, or Commissioner Loop, you appear, do you have a question?
Well, I just had a question for Jason, can I ask about what the calendar and what the clock's looking like?
Yeah, maybe you can clarify where we're at in the 60-day review period. Kimberly or Jason?
Commissioners, the end of the 60-day review period is, looks like it's mid-April, and of course, we have the ability to continue that an additional 60 days. So we'd be looking at June, keeping in mind that that has to accommodate any potential appeals. So there would be some ability to continue the project, but certainly not a couple of months.
So if we opted to continue it, what would be the latest date we could continue that to? And I can give you a minute if you'd like. Otherwise, we can maybe move on to some other questions. So is, maybe I should ask first, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? And if there's no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Vreeland.
We have briefly discussed drive-throughs at committee of the whole, and I think that this is a very different kind of drive-through than McDonald's or Arby's. And there's a new Walgreens in my neighborhood that has a drive-through. And I'm sure there's a variety of opinions about this, but I would not immediately discard the idea that drive-throughs are not appropriate in an urban environment, again, with sick people and folks that have handicap stickers, that it would be a lot easier. It seems like a fairly, again, I'm concerned with traffic problems, as are my colleagues, but I think having drive-through pharmacies can be of great benefit. So as we pursue this issue, I know globally, there's a larger question. So I just would like to have some more conversations about the drive-through at some point.
Okay. And that is more of a policy matter, and I know that drive-through issue is on the staff's work plan for this year, so I'm sure we'll--
But that is the basic reason why we're discussing it today.
Well, today, we're discussing this particular application. I'm sure we'll have a broader policy discussion in the future. Commissioner Magrino, or is it Commissioner Kronzer? Commissioner Gagin.
Thank, yeah, okay. So to the small area plan point, so now we're going to go through a comprehensive plan review to try to bring zoning codes into line, more alignment with all these other small plans that we've created throughout the city. And so where does that fit in this? I mean, if we'd already done the comp plan, more than likely, we would be asking for more height in that area in the zoning codes, right? So I feel pretty strongly about, we fail to define how we value small area plans or not. So we go through a process, and then we ignore them when it's convenient, and we enforce them when it's convenient. So that just, I don't know, I would agree that this needs more height. You know, I go to DC a lot, go to Chicago a lot. You walk by a Walgreens, don't even know it's a Walgreens. So there are ways to do this in an urban environment. And I'm not opposed to the drive-through for some of the same reasons mentioned, but I think there's, this looks like a dinah. So, what's, okay, a dinah, nothing wrong with a dinah, but we don't live in a dinah. Metta, what's, Mettaina, is that a city? Oh, sorry, Mettaina.
I don't know, Mr. Wittenberg, if you have anything to add to that. And I do know, it is often a little bit of a concern that we, and we do go through these planning processes, and oftentimes, we're kind of stuck with the zoning districts we have, and it can be difficult to implement every policy directly.
Sure. Commissioners, in small area plans, some policies are aspirational, others are more sort of quasi-mandatory in nature. So it's incumbent upon the city to decide which aspects of a small area plan are going to be made into regulation, and that will be most immediately addressed through the study that staff will do to examine, expanding the pedestrian-oriented overlay district in this area, which could include things like minimum number of stories and/or minimum floor area ratio. And then, of course, we've got the broader comprehensive plan revision coming up too, and that has implications for zoning code revisions as well.
All right. And Commissioner Magrino or Commissioner Kronzer, do you have--
They're splitting, I think. Yeah, I just wanted to make a general comment before we get into motions, that this is funny, because it's sort of the opposite situation from the Uptown Hotel proposal that we just saw a couple of weeks ago, but sort of the same underlying issue. So we have neighbors that are showing up, that are saying that the neighborhood is opposed to something, and the small area plan doesn't say that you could do something, but the underlying zoning says that you can. And so I'm pretty wary of being inconsistent with decisions that I know I've made in the past. You know, people show up to a meeting and say that they don't want something that's not really legal basis for the commission to deny an application. And so I would really urge that we work on reforming our zoning code a little bit, that we have some things that were introduced shortly after this application got in that would prevent it from happening again. But, you know, instead of being so reactive to these things as they come up, I hope that we can avoid it in the future.
All right. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is a really helpful discussion and one that's good to have. I mean, it's clear that our policies are lacking here. We don't have the FAR minimums that we should on this corridor. There has been a long discussion about how we use pedestrian-oriented overlay districts. Part of the reason that we haven't extended them to more areas in my discussions with staff is because it includes things like not allowing drive-throughs or other auto-oriented uses. And so that, those are the tools that we have. So I guess the point, the greater point I was trying to make is when we don't, we have developers that are not willing to make, you know, the kinds of compromises with the neighbors, that the hotel proposer did actually significantly reduce the height of their original proposal, using that as an example. And there are many other examples in the city where people have proposed things that have been really out of character with what the community wants to see. And of course, we have to weigh, you know, who represents the community and is their division, and often there is. But, you know, in my discussions with my own constituents, who are just on the other side of Hennepin Avenue, as well as council member Goodman's, you know, it seems to me that, you know, pretty universally, people want to see something that is more in keeping with the urban environment of our neighborhoods than this. And it's unfortunate to see, again, a company that we know has many locations across the city that provides a great service to many of our neighborhoods, being totally unwilling to design something that fits in to our community. And we don't have the regulations to require it. I think that we can require some things. I think we can require the door to be in the appropriate place, but that's really just a start to what's wrong with the architecture of this building. So, you know, I just, I guess I would urge the applicant to rethink this again, you know, to say, what does it look like to be in a city? You know, and we have to ask nicely, because our regulations don't allow it, allow us to do more, really, I think. I mean, I don't know if other commissioners have creative ideas about things that we could require to improve this architecture, but certainly, we can't require it to be two stories, for example. So I think it's unfortunate, but reality of where our regulations are at. But again, you know, just one last time to say, I wish that this applicant would be more willing to work with folks to get to a design that everyone could be happy with and proud of and welcome to the community.
Okay. And Mr. Wittenberg has informed me, we would have the ability to continue this application two cycles to the April 11th meeting, if there is interest in doing that. Is there any further discussion, or would someone like to make a motion?
I would make that motion.
All right. We have a motion to continue this item to the April 11th meeting. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Rockwell.
I just want to touch on a couple things to inform the period between now and April 11th. You know, I think we don't, we don't in part have design guidelines in this city because that's a heavy hand and it clamps down on creative architecture, but it also allows for architecture that is uninspired. But I do believe, I do have a creative way for us to regulate the design of this, and I'm a lawyer and don't want to do this, but I'm going to give a little bit of an overview of what I will do on the 11th, if we don't see a better design. And then you can decide whether I have any basis and authority. So there's alternate compliance required here to reduce the percent of windows on the first story and on the second story. And the alternate compliance may be granted if, and I quote, ordinance 530.80, "The alternative meets the intent of the chapter, and the site plan includes amenities or improvements that address any adverse effects of the alternative." Site amenities may include architectural enhancements and design which is similar in form scale and materials to existing structures on the site and surrounding development. And then there's also a section that says, "Proposed alternatives consistent with applicable development plans or development objectives." So that actually gives us some latitude to talk about the, about the design here, because the ordinance says that in order to grant alternative compliance, there need to be concessions made on architectural enhancements, design that fit with development objectives. So we have, we have a tool. The development objectives are outlined in Chapter 10 of the Comprehensive Plan, page 14, Commercial. This is in the Urban Design section. I'm not good with computers, so I have everything printed out. Box retails can have a place in an urban environment as long as their design adheres to urban principles. This then goes on to strongly suggest adaptive reuse of-- This then goes on to strongly suggest adaptive reuse of existing structures or new use, or new construction of multi-level, multi-use buildings with structured underground parking. This is a suggestion. This is not in the zoning code, as been pointed out. Traditional big-box retailers should gain a foothold in the urban market without imposing a suburban model. Then in Policy 10.11.2, it says, "Ensure that new commercial developments maximize compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods." So in light of these development objectives, the motion that I was going to propose, and hope I don't have to propose, on the 11th, is just talking about some of the, the features of the neighborhood. So, you know, in order to grant alternate compliance, to inset windows from the brick to eliminate a completely flat frontage, to provide awnings over windows along Henepin Avenue, to provide a varied roofline around the full building, and/or provide a basic cornice or cap at the roofline, and as part of this, either remove or make more interesting the suburban-style tower and hat or cap over the entrance. And four, provide brick detailing or metal elements in the several feet below the roofline. So those are just the bullet points there, but each of these has, each of these exist within two or three blocks of this site, and each element exists in a Walgreens. So the inset windows, go take a look at 2819 Henepin, or look at the Walgreens in Wazetta. The awnings, go look at the entire block lengths on 2700, 2800 block of Henepin, or look at the Walgreens on Central Avenue in northeast Minneapolis. The top of the building, no neighborhood buildings have these suburban hat, hat things, again, lawyer, not architect. Most have cornices or caps. Green Mill has a varied roofline. And then in terms of the entrance, it's actually, the Chipotle is okay as an entrance, it's got kind of a weird medical thing, but it's distinctive. There's an Evanston, Illinois, Walgreens at Chicago and Keeney, which has a pretty cool entrance as well. And in terms of the detailing, to the northwest corner of Henepin and 28th, provides an example of colored brick detailing. 2609 Henepin provides some nice examples of brick relief. And in terms of Walgreens President, there's the coolest Walgreens ever in Honolulu, which has some pretty intense architecture. And then more conservatively, there's some brickwork above in that, in that kind of dead zone below the roof at 27th and National in Milwaukee. So all of these are possible, Anna Walgreens, and all of these are a part of the neighborhood character. I don't feel like I'm qualified to make these kinds of decisions, because I, I am not trained in building design, and I like the feel of, of a city, but, but don't want to have to design it. But, but if this still looks as uninspired as it does on the 11th, I think this is a tool that the commission should use, and I would propose we use it if, if necessary. You know, and, and I will echo and leave to my colleagues' comments, my disappointment over the single-story and drive-through and all that, but I don't think we have a tool for that. So, you know, that's kind of a good neighbor thing, which it doesn't look like we're going to get, which I'm very disappointed by, but without a legal tool at this point, that's what we've got.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Magrino, then Commissioner Kronzer.
Thank you. I was just going to make a general point. I mean, I don't, I guess I don't oppose continuing this another month here, but I, I don't, I guess I would be pretty surprised if they came back with a six-story building. I mean, it, there's sort of, you know, I don't think people are really as upset about the drive-through component of this, as that it's a one-story building on Henepin Avenue, but like I said earlier, they're allowed to build a one-story building on Henepin Avenue. And, you know, it's sort of funny, putting yourself in the mind of whoever's selling this property, they can make money building one-story Walgreens, they could also make money building a six-story building, but I would imagine that there would be considerable, considerable resistance to that as well, and that's something that we would have to then consider through CUPs and all kinds of other regulations. And so I, you know, they're sort of in it, I guess I'd be very surprised to see a three or four-story building pencil out on a parcel like this. And so, you know, I, I'm not exactly sure what we're asking them for, because we can't change the zoning. And so, you know, I mean, we can move the windows around a bit, we can move the door around a bit, but I, I don't know what we're really going to get out of dragging this out any longer.
Commissioner Kronzer. Thank you. Just a couple of specific points, and I look forward to the changes, hopefully. Just in regards to the entry at the corner of 27th and Henepin, I would hate to have Metro Transit be blamed for not having the entrance on that corner. There is some flexibility with that transit shelter, and I can connect you with the people that talk to you. I mean, look at transit shelters and their location of the bus stop, they vary by quite a bit around even Uptown. So I don't think that's an impediment. If you look at the location of the parking lot and the sidewalk to where the corner is, it's almost dead flat, so there is no accessibility issues. The ADA code requires handicap parking to be closest to the entry where parking is provided. So if there's parking, provide where it is. The handicap stalls need to be the closest to the entry of those parking stalls. So you might have to, the applicant argue about adjacency of the handicap parking stalls to entries. That's not really a code thing, it might be a preference, but in my read of the building code, and accessibility code, that's not an issue. So I'd really encourage to make this very suburban project more urban as, as best applicant can see it. Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in response to Commissioner Magrino's question, and just so I'm very clear about what I expect to happen in the time that we're delaying this project, we could, I think, and I appreciate Commissioner Rockwell's assessment and his proposal for how to get a better design here. I think what we're asking for is the architecture team to design this building in a way that is more in keeping with the character of the community, so that we do not have to design it ourselves through conditions of approval. So I just want to be very clear that that's what I hope will happen, and I think that's been voiced several times here. So no one expects a six-story building back, but we do expect a building that is more in keeping with an urban design.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to continue this application to April 11th. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Jagnan.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Loop, you appear.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
DZ.
Aye.
Riehl.
Aye.
680.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on this item, and also concludes our business for today. We have committee of the hall this Thursday. Our next meeting is March 28th.